...in the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Did you hear me not there?
No, it's fun on its own.
We could have a moment of silence for men and women in uniform. We'll open the meeting here at two minutes after six. Please turn your phones to vibrate. Adjustments to the agenda? John, do you have any?
Yeah, we included some correspondence from Mr. Roger Brooks on Section 7. He had some concerns about the whole marijuana law. And we had some updates on Number 10, which is the town manager's report section. Update letter from the Economic Development Consultant. Just a reminder that on the 12th is the downtown revitalization presentation at the school. We've got a renewal notice from Electricity Maine that's quite high, so I did some research and we have some information on electricity rates from Maine Power Options. And some correspondence that we submitted to support the broadband grant that was due today. We had a couple of letters of support, one from the county and one from Laurie. So we sent them both in with our concerns. Give you a copy of all that so you can see what we did.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, before we go to public speak, those of you here that do want to speak, please make sure that you've signed in. We know who you are and we can refer to it back in a minute. Anybody that has any items, anything to talk about that's non-agenda items?
If John could help me on this possibly, but just an update for the board. Found out last Friday that Thursday, the 20th, lunchtime at the wastewater conference, they'll be honoring Frenchie with a proclamation for his service to the town and his participation in the clean water.
Has anybody notified the family?
I did.
Wonderful. And it's going to be when?
Thursday, the 20th, at 12 to 1:30 in at Sandy River. The three operators from town will also be partaking in that conference, one for training and two as part of this process.
You know what time it starts? Or any idea closer?
Lunch is between 12:30 and 13:00.
They're going to do it at lunch?
Yes, 12 and 1:30. I'll have more information as I communicate.
Could let me know, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Questions? Sir?
Robert Hamilton, Rowanford Road. First, I had to say, can't even pay my taxes today. And people are always great here working side. And I didn't burp when I got my bill. So I commend you and the board of selectmen, all of you, the select women, you did a great job on Budget Committee. So.
Thank you. Thank them.
Yeah, and you know, and the Budget Committee, I know they're not here tonight, but obviously we all work together in unison, so you know, there was no sticker shock or anything at all, so I came in and again, it's always a pleasure. Next thing, I was wondering, more of a question for you to think about, all of you as a board, why do we allow fireworks in Ransley? Other than, you know, I'm talking outside of this sanctioned town event on July 3rd. I mean, for the environment, for the wildlife. Now, I don't think anybody comes to Ransley for fireworks. And if they do, probably don't want those people there anyway. And I, you know, you all did a great job years back on ordinance. And I understand, you know, people don't follow, and enforcement is an issue, obviously. And I also understand that. But you know, up in Dallas, no fireworks. Fran York from the association up there, Moon Lake, was telling me she's thrilled with it. And they had a quiet Fourth of July. And I understand compliance is hard to get and might take a while, but really, why? What do we get for it?
Well, first of all, it's legal in the state of Maine.
Yeah.
And they have to follow state laws. And we make sure of that. And we do, the police department does respond to those that don't have. Let me back up a little bit. You have to, first of all, contact the fire chief and let them know what you're going to do, and they either okay it or they don't. And if there are issues in the area that it's going to be set off, then sometimes they say no. It's not always a yes, that I can tell you. So in terms of enforcement, police do as good a job as they can do. Sometimes they're not reported if they're of an illegal nature, meaning they haven't met the intent and the law itself. Anybody else have anything they want to chime in on?
Yeah, depending on where you are also in Ransley, the stuff you may be hearing may not be coming from Ransley. It could be coming from Sandy River, Dallas, or anywhere, not Dallas, obviously.
Well, down in Closet, I don't know.
Right, but it could be across the lake, which isn't Ransley. And you know, doesn't mean it's actually in Ransley where the fireworks are coming. They probably are, but not necessarily. And we have no control over what happens on the backside of the lake.
And the last thing is, you've all probably seen what the ice sword that was removed down in Closet, the Four Seasons, and the people love it there. I mean, it's not a sanctioned town park, but people sit there, they eat their lunch. It's really proven to be a nice benefit, so I commend the coops for taking initiative, putting the grass in there, putting chairs and tables for people. People really utilize it, and it's been a positive for that area, so they should be commended for that. So, thank you.
You should, you should take five minutes and say thank you to Michael and Larry. Larry's here if you want to. But I will tell you, you've got to thank Michael for the grass. He's the one who watered all the time. Anything else?
No.
Larry, we're leaving public to speak. Anything? Okay, thank you.
Minutes.
Oh, yes, get through the minutes. I love it when I do that. We'll go back to Number 3 review and approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the August 20th, 2018 regular meeting, and as to any corrections or additions.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? See, that was pretty clear. Boards and committees? Anything?
Downtown revitalization.
I'm sorry?
The downtown revitalization meeting, public hearing, is...
We're going to talk about that in Number 8.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Boards and committees? Consent items, dispersment warrants, AP warrants, FY 19 to Number 12. We get all the signatures that we needed?
Carrie did not give me a stack of anything, so I'm assuming so before she forgot.
Okay, very good. Outdoor festival, Northwoods gravel grind.
I'll make a motion to approve the AP warrant, Number 12, in the amount of $959,495.95.
Seven.
Oh, yeah. Anybody?
Donnie's second.
Donnie's second. All in favor? Yes, thank you. Keeping me out of the track here. Can we go to the gravel grind now, sir?
That's the best.
Drive and roll. I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the outdoor festival permit application for the Northwoods gravel grind, taking place on Saturday, September 15th, rain or shine. Registration starts at 8:00. Second.
Any questions? Get all the proper signatures and everything? Everything good there? All in favor? All opposed? Wright Pierce Downtown Revitalization Reserve, $5,448.24.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of $5,448.24 to Wright Pierce out of the downtown revitalization reserve account.
John, we got the invoice date. The invoice started at 7/27/18, and then it says date 10, 8/10/18.
Yeah, when I first saw it, I didn't understand that it had to come to you. Apparently, when you set this money aside, you, when you hired Wright Pierce for this project, taking it from the reserve fund, only the board can authorize the money to come from the reserve fund. So that's why it didn't make it to the last meeting, because I didn't know that part of it.
Okay.
Normally, I would just approve these, but that's why it had to wait for this meeting. And we did talk to them. Steve, what's the name, Steve? No, the guy from Wright Pierce.
Jeff.
Jeff. He was aware that we had to wait until next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Just a second. I didn't hear anyone's second. Shelley, don't.
Kelly.
Thank you. Sorry.
I didn't hear Shelley either, actually, she's whispering over here. Correspondents, downtown meal site. We have a letter that says thank you from the Board of the Townhouse. It says, "To the Town of Ransley, thank you so much for your donation to the meal site. Without you," in quotations, "the meal site could not continue. You help many people have a good meal. Thank you again, the Board of the Townhouse." And the next, Volunteers of America, it's quite lengthy, but it goes to, it's a thank you note to Chief French. There is a, there is a paragraph I do want to read. It's essentially, it says, "Thank you from Camp Postcard 2018. There was 161 campers from 16 counties of Maine." Goes on to describe some of the celebrations, arts and crafts, and so on. It says here, "We are not forgetting that you gave up a week with friends and family to bond with these campers and never asked for much in return. It's thrilling to hear that campers from years ago are still communicating with their leaders and the boys they grew up with married. Their children now have attended the camp. Sincerely from..." A whole host of people here, CEOs and Chief Deputy from Lincoln County Sheriff's Office and so on. Chief French, again, is shining. I want to also read to you, there's a tiny little handwritten from a person named Kyle, or is it Kylie? Is that how you say it?
Kylie.
Making new friends and always learning how to play Gaga. I don't know what that is. "I love the leaders, Jen, Suzie, Adam, and Russ. I love this camp so much I don't want to leave." Kylie. Old Business Downtown Revitalization Plan.
Is this supposed to go in?
The other card is going, it's from Mr. Brooks.
Do you, I was going to, okay, you want me to do that one now? Let me take it out here. Who has the copy in trouble? This is a letter from, that was received, actually. I opened it today. It was actually addressed to Chairman Cindy Egan. "Friends, we are distressed to learn that Ransley may be heading towards adopting an ordinance allowing marijuana sales within the town. Driving backwards of Maine this summer, we passed through several small and failing towns in which cannabis signs was the only freshly painted sign in town. These are towns, obviously desperate and grasping at any straw to bring dollars into the community. We would be sorry to see Ransley class itself with that group and surprised that it should feel the need to do so. We purchased a house in Ransley and have raised our children with Ransley as their every summer home, in part because it is such a family-friendly town. We do have serious concerns that the marijuana dispensing Ransley may attract a rather different crowd, and we wonder how comfortable we or their parents will be in the future years with bringing our grandchildren to a place that declares marijuana no problem. We have envisioned Ransley as a multi-generational retreat for our family, and we've been delighted to sink down roots here. Inviting marijuana dispensaries into the town makes us less sure of Ransley's future and of our family's long-term future here in Ransley, less willing to invest our money and hearts in Ransley. Since the future of Ransley is in many ways entrusted to your hands, we thought we should let you know that. We know that your jobs are not easy ones and appreciate all that you do for the community. Sincerely, Roger and Ann Brooks." They reside in New York City and have a summer home on Main Street here in Ransley, Box 9, 22 Main Street. Sorry.
That's all right, thanks.
Okay, now to old business. Downtown revitalization plan, the only thing we're going to talk about here quickly is Wednesday night's hearing at the school, September 12th at 6:00 PM. There is a lot of material that you'll be given when you get there, but essentially there's, you can pass this out, you'll see this here. Just go around the room if you'd like, so you can update what you're doing. Actually, go to road standards. John?
Yeah, I came up at the last meeting, a concern about the road when it gets redone at the end of the airport, Moon Lake Road. And concerned that it wasn't going to be built according to town standards, and that didn't make sense to me. So I gave you a copy of Chapter 27, which deals with road standards. And on the third page, you'll see Section 27.2.3, which lists all the construction specifications for different road types, collector road, local road, mobile home park. So at the end of that section for town standards, I copied all of the design drawings from the engineer, starting at R 1.1 through R 1.16, which shows all the construction specifications. And if you look on R 1.1, you'll see that the design for Moon Lake Road calls for 18 inches of subbase course, four inches crushed aggregate base course, two inches of coarse pavement, two inches of surface pavement, 12-foot travel lanes on each side of the center line, three-foot gravel, shoulders, different slopes, and all the construction specifications are in there for every road section as you build that entire stretch. And if you look back on Section 27.2.3, construction specifications, you'll find that for collector road, requires proper slope, quarter inch per foot, which the design has more than for that road. Surface leveling cost four inches, exactly what's specified. Road base minimum 18 inches, exactly what's specified. Minimum width of pavement, 24 feet for collector road, exactly what's specified. So you'll find, looking through there, that the specifications meet all the town's code specifications, except for on a collector road, the width of shoulders calls for six feet, calls for three feet on a local road or on mobile park road, mobile home park road. That's the only thing I couldn't, I found that calls for three feet of shoulders rather than six feet for collector road. So that could easily be remedied by telling the engineer that that has to be changed and make sure that's highlighted in the contract documents for, you know, in that portion of the road.
Did the minimum right away, 60 feet?
We own all that.
We own it anyway.
We can, I believe the whole rest of the road is probably at least 50.
Yep.
I'm not sure, but we can set 60 if we want. There's no problem. We own all of it.
Set 60, I can.
So we can establish that at any time.
Yeah.
But you'll see that on the pavement side of it, more than complies with the town specs. Town specs call for three inches, they're proposing four, two inches of base and two inches. So with tack coating between, which is a little better job. So I think, let's try to alleviate anybody's concerns that we're not going to be rolling this according to the town's specifications.
Keith, you have anything more to add to that?
I just contacted with CEO Tom Willis today. He has arranged, he has spoken with a gentleman with the DOT, just give us the state standards so we can have those in comparison. I don't have them tonight, where Tom is out sick and those gentlemen have been on vacation. So they're communications and we'll have more information in regards to this, just in regards to the state standards would be in comparison to the town field, as John stated, I think where the specs, her proposal is above and beyond will be out for standards.
Thank you. Anything from the board? Thanks.
No, I think it just confused matters because there was that Article B 22 that the attorney suggested that we vote on, and so, thank you so much. I mean, this is kind of where your experience is so helpful.
I built a road to.
I know. And so, we're very appreciative, because looking, yeah, looking through these drawings, yeah, it didn't make much sense to me.
Well, right on that first page, if you read the fine print underneath, you can see all the 15 inches and four inches and two inches. So it definitely complies with our standards. It should be no issue.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. You're doing a wonderful job on Ballon Road. I did, the only question I have is I looked closely at the culvert by your place, right by Ballon Camps. It's not in that bad shape yet for a $200,000 renovation if you stopped and looked at both ends of it.
Let's tell, let us fill you in on what's going on on that road. Instead of going at that culvert this year and the other culvert that's farther down by the turn at Alterios, we're going to grind, we are grinding the entire road and going to pave it, and then go after a grant for those in the future as we need it. That's not in the...
And one more thing, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Buzz. I mean, it looks wonderful what they're doing. They should be praised for the job they're doing and the way draft is flowing. Quite well, I'd say, you know, I went down there three times today, wasn't able to be wrecked late to this, but there's a pitch at the end of the hot top at Cal Propice, and when you look at it, I haven't had a chance to ask Buzz, maybe Keith would know, are you going to rock that in and put a under culvert?
Yeah, so with...
Because you've got a road that goes from 20 feet to 11 feet. You've got a pitch right on the corner that looks rather hazardous right now where they hammered out that stone.
Correct. So right, I'll have to look into that a little bit further. I know, obviously, through the replane process, pipe will come in, we'll bring some material in, material in.
When they broke the stone, they did a good job. They did it.
Yes, yes.
But they lost the road. So I don't know if they're going to rock that in and riprap that in and put a perforated underdrain to get the road back.
I'll have to look into that.
They can look at it, because it's quite a dangerous pitch right on the rising corner.
I know the corner you're on, I just, the intention from there, I'll have to...
Take a quick look at it, because if, because we've had a car there today, you've voted on, you've got your hands on it right there.
We definitely gained a little, I say gained some road, but at the same time, like you said, with that pitch, you've been a lot...
Yeah, you can't take it right around the other lakeside because of the guy grass.
There is an intention, I know there's intention to get a bigger hammer next, hopefully next year, to kind of get back more of that corner also.
Just, just to break you off, I just want to mention...
Thank you. I will, I'll look into that.
Thank you. All set?
Yes.
All other hands going up? Okay. Next is the request from the ordinance committee for the marijuana ordinance. You guys will just hang on, so we can get to that page and get started. There are two ordinance that this time the ordinance committee would like to forward to the board of selectmen for action. Number one is the adult use marijuana stores, cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, and testing facilities ordinance. The ordinance committee is requesting, after the board's review, to send this to the town's attorney for incorporation into Chapter 38 of the zoning ordinance. Everybody had a chance to review? We have any questions on the review? Let's start with that first.
Yeah, I, there are some typos and, you know, I just, I'm curious just for to have, you know, the attorney review it, make sure that, I mean, we don't, you know, we don't want any ambiguities. We've dealt with enough with, you know, an ordinance issue with the cement plant and all the legal matters that went into that, but I'm looking forward to the attorney reviewing it and giving us some feedback.
So you have no specific changes you want to make other than a few grammatical errors?
Yeah.
You'd like to send it in its entirety to have it reviewed, correct?
To the attorney, yes, yes.
How about you, Shelley?
I just had a couple of questions, like, for example, on the first section where it's 11 dash 14 dash one title, and it's totally, it specifies the different types of facilities, and I'm just wondering if they shouldn't be defined more of what, like, what their type is or something like that? Like a definition of what type it is, so someone can't just say, okay, this is what I'm doing? Does that make sense?
No.
Well, like, so if they say, well, I consider what I have for a business as a manufacturing facility, so what is that considered? What is that saying definitions for the different types that we've labeled here?
Do we know that?
And then I just had the spelling issues as well.
I mean, they're going to have to go to the planning board and the whole nine yards before they do anything.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, we need public hearings and public input.
You're absolutely correct. We'll get to that. Any other changes you'd like to make to that?
Some spelling stuff.
Or grammatical stuff? Yeah? Anything of substance?
We can hand copies to John of our markups and just send them on.
Yep. Donnie, anything?
No.
How did the ordinance committee feel about this draft and...
Well, that's why, you know, it's going to go to the order anyway, but we want to make sure that what we've written is not changed between when we wrote it in and now, because the state's been messing with this for God knows how long.
Hey, you have any, hold on, I'll get to it. You have anything, John, you want to throw in at this?
Yeah, the state did finally pass an ordinance on it, so...
They did.
It should be, usually takes 90 days after the adjournment of the legislature, so by the time you bring this up at your town meeting, the state law will be in effect.
All right, before we go out in the public, just a couple of statements. Number one, as Cindy had said, this is going to go to a number of public hearings before this goes anywhere, but the ultimate goal is to get, the ultimate result will be that the townspeople will decide about this ordinance, not the board's selectmen. So our job is to get this thing to a point where it's presentable at town meeting, that has lawyer review, that has all of the necessary components done, including public hearings. Luke, you've been a big part of this. Do you want to have anything to say about this, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, surely, just to address your concerns, that's actually how the state defines the different business structures. They just say retail, adult use marijuana license, they don't give a definition. Manufacturing, cultivation, we got rid of the outdoor part of it up here to make sure it stays just really locked and enclosed. And the state statute is official, it's on the books. We're waiting for medical to go through because...
The medical got approved too.
It got approved, but because they haven't gone back into whatever, recess or whatever.
We're going back in Thursday.
Yeah, the 90-day clock hasn't started on that, but...
And that should, that should adjourn finally Thursday.
Right, but adult use is done, it's on the books. So that's how we crafted this ordinance, based on the statute, so there's no changes that can be made, so that we're not going to get thrown a curve ball, saying something changed. It was changing for a long time, and that's done, it's over, you know? There's no issues there.
Thank you.
Until the next legislature decides to...
Don't say that.
Right, that's, we'll deal with that.
That seems to happen a lot down there.
We might, yes. Then everybody knows we'll just hold on for 10 years.
All right, Cindy brought up a point. We can't leave this thing open indefinitely in terms of our revisions and our concerns and questions. So the question tonight is to move this to a lawyer to be reviewed. So when we vote on it, either make your adjustments tonight, get it to John so it goes with your adjustments, or it's going to go as it is.
No, I'll make sure that John gets a, gets a copy.
Okay, is everybody good with that? You had something else you wanted to throw in?
I think you already mentioned that the state law has probably two or three pages of definitions that define all these terms.
Okay, good. I answered your question then. Yep. Anything else from the board? I need a motion to move this to legal.
I'll make a motion that we submit the draft of the Town of Ransley adult use marijuana stores, cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, and testing facilities ordinance to party familiarity for review.
Second.
Any other questions from the board? We good? All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, sure, just to follow up with that. If you read the MMA news... If you read the, the MMA news briefs every week, marijuana is just permeating the news and towns are taking different ways of addressing public feedback. And some towns are adopting non-binding surveys, um, to get, uh, to get public feedback. Others have introduced non-binding, um, voting ballots in their November, um, in their November elections. So it's just, there's, there's more way to get feedback than just, um, you know, just public hearings if the board is interested in learning more about that. So.
Are you, are you suggesting this in lieu of public hearings?
No, um, I'm just saying, I'm just saying we've got, um, you know, we've got a number of second homeowners that, you know, probably would like to chime in. Whether they're pro or against and, you know, public hearings, they can't always make them. And, and if there's, you know, if there's a survey that, you know, they can take out with the town clerk, you know, just so we don't get a lot, you know, we don't get duplicate surveys, just for feedback, just to get, because this, we don't want this to. We want this to end up being an ordinance that folks can live with and not end up, you know, with any legal ramifications or a group of folks saying that they didn't get their, you know, they, they weren't heard or whatnot. So it's just, just a way to gather info that other towns are following.
I agree. And I don't think it would hurt. And, you know, half a dozen questions, nothing too serious, just, you know, bang, 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 bang.
Yep. And since somebody's already done this thing, let's, since reinventing the wheel, it's clearly.
Yeah. Yeah, this is from, this is from the Bridgeton News. Bridgeton's a very similar town to us, um, as far as the number of second homeowners. It's a semi-resort town. It's got, you know, Shawnee Peak, it's got the lakes and the camp. So it's, it's, it's an approach they took.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Disbursement warrants. Second part of the ordinance committee's request is the ordinance committee is requesting after the board's review, the selectmen move forward with the adoption process. Special amusement ordinance is still being worked out, so we'll move past that. Chapter thirty-seven dispersment warrants ordinance. Thirteen point one, the authority, thirteen point three, procedure for approval. Talks about authority. This ordinance is enacted pursuant to thirty A M R S A three zero zero one municipal home rule. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide an alternative to the statutory procedure for approval of warrants authorizing the treasurer to disburse money. Article thirteen point three, procedure for approval. The treasurer may disburse money only on the authority of a warrant drawn for the purpose either A, affirmatively moved and signed by a majority of the municipal officers at a duly called public meeting such as the selectmen's meeting. B, seen and signed by a majority of them acting individually and separately. Or C, signed as otherwise provided by law for the dispersment of employees' wages and benefits and payment of a municipal education cost. John, can you just clarify for a few minutes what, what this all means? Add some clarity.
Well, um, you have been in the years past operating under section D. The law says you have to do section A at a public meeting, which we clarified a few months or so ago. And, um, there's a special provision for wages and education payments that would allow you to designate one person to okay those on a weekly basis. Because the law also says you can't withhold an employee's paycheck. So, um, what this would do is it would allow every board of selectmen at their organizational meeting to decide, how do you want to do it? For your year. So you can, you can choose between what we're doing now, bringing it up for a vote at a meeting. Or, um, signed by at least three of you coming in on your own during the day when they're ready on a Friday. And then on the wages and benefits, you can actually designate one person to come in and sign for the paycheck. So employees can get paid on time. And we can send the school bill along without having to worry about it. We only have one. This, this was first put in there for, you know, most towns had their own school department. But it, it still applies because we send a monthly check to the school RSU. It's not that critical on that anymore, but it is on employee wages. This is exactly what, um, was proposed by the municipal to satisfy the law. If we have this as an ordinance, then you can do it any way you wish according to your option.
So the question is to move this forward to public to the June town meeting. Any questions from the board regarding this? Anything from the public? You all set with that?
Any different than you're doing it now?
Yeah, there's a couple of questions. Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the chapter thirty-seven dispersment warrant. As presented.
Move the second, Donnie second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Before we go to new business, um, it was requested of us some time ago when, when there were some reviews of the minutes. And there was a suggestion that certain people can't be seen because of camera placement. I talked with Richie tonight real briefly before as you came in, and he said, I need to come to you to get this thing moved. So if you need help.
Move the camera?
Yeah, move the camera just to the corner of the, so, so it's around that post and Mr. Brunswick can be seen along with the other folks in this section of the room.
Now we're talking.
Okay.
Is that why Larry always sits over that?
Just a blind spot.
Very good. New business. We received a letter from Lake Region Builders and the letter goes like this. It was sent to Keith, actually. I have watched the process, excuse me, I have watched the process of install and repair the town office concrete entryway over the past years. I have also poured concrete, patios, and other outside concrete at my house. Using the state specs for exterior concrete on their own walks and patios, in closed parentheses. On all of the exterior concrete I poured, fifty percent of it has resulted in the surface flaking over, flaking off over time, resulting in what you have now. In my opinion, the town would be better served by replacing concrete with asphalt walks and granite steps. This would stop the constant cost of repair on a product that has proven not to work in this part of the state. Thank you. James E. Williams, Lake Region Builders. P.S. I currently have a tiring machine. I'm just joking.
Just checking to see if we're with.
Duly noted. He's right. That's a mess up there. We gotta find a way to fix that. Just keep.
If I may also on that, I have done a little bit of more research in regards to that. I have a quote from Pike for pavement. I have Mike Ramalde coming up this week to give a different opinion on concrete for the walkway. He states that if you obviously pour concrete as, as specs would require with rebar and everything else, matting. Salt guarded, and you don't apply any salt or calcium for the first year to hold up after that. If you just use strictly dirt for the first year, or sand, excuse me. And keep it shoveled, after that the lifespan won't have the flaking problems, what he states. So obviously a difference in opinion. I have him, he's gonna write up a quote for repair plus, um, his, his, uh, his opinion on, on concrete. And I also have Jason with American Concrete coming up to give us a quote on a new set of stairs, whether it be granite or precasted concrete.
Well, since you're seeking opinions, I'd like to see you get rid of salt period. That's just my opinion.
I can respect that.
Would they have to dig it up no matter what they do to it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's gotta be removed and then whatever we, you decide.
There really is no good, uh, short-term plan in regards to patch. Obviously, if you patch it, the moisture's already in the concrete, so it's gonna continue to deteriorate at this point.
Anything else? Concrete warrants? Anything to add, John?
No, we just, uh, we're looking into it and when we got that opinion, we wanted you to know that. We wanna do it in asphalt that lasts ten years and you gotta replace it. It's a lot cheaper than digging that up and putting in concrete, so. We'll see what the other.
Cost is.
Yeah, and the cost, that's another factor. It needs to be done, as you all know, if you've walked up the front step, because almost every slab of concrete has some deterioration in it.
It's affecting the brick wall at that point. You get your mortar, your bricks coming out from the same process, the salt, water, it's here, you know, it's not, drainage isn't proper. I don't think the hedges held completely either. We definitely need to rethink the front end.
Thank you. Assessing RFP. Cindy, you have a number of concerns about that, but let me start by saying that the, the, um, the bid that was sent to us, I believe. John and I have had some discussion on this thing and we've both come to a similar conclusion that, uh, we believe that they didn't understand the intent of our request. They have down here a number of days that they would be working here that we don't think they need to be here. That's number one I want to make clear. And number two, the, um, well, let me stop there because I know you have some other questions. Go ahead, Cindy.
I was just, I was just hoping for some good competitive bids to save some money, that's all.
We only got one incident.
Yeah, we only got one bid, one response, and that's with our current, um, our, our current assessor. I, it's, it was hard finding that.
I had a hard time finding it too, but I had to ask, where was it?
Yeah, our RFPs on the website aren't easy to find. Um.
We had to go to government first and then it's very clear, bid opportunities, and it's right there.
Yeah, but it's, it, so.
But I, I did what you did and went to job opportunities.
Yeah.
And it lists every employer down on Main Street that's looking high at somebody.
Yeah.
Nobody from. It's like a link.
Yeah, so I, so.
Can I?
I, I think, you know, relative to that particular point, uh, my thoughts on that are that these people that are looking for these types of opportunities for their company know exactly where to go. They're not looking for a job on Main Street, Reinsley. They're looking through, for government agencies. So as an example, would you know where to go to find a construction bid?
I, you know, probably not.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, again, pointing that out, we didn't get any. I don't think it's because Reinsley didn't do it right.
No, it's just, um, I don't know, it's, if, if you're, if, I just expected it to be one of, you know, we've got these, um, rotating messages that, you know, that share the first page of the website. So, um, I guess I, I was expecting it to flash through one of the, one of those, you know, looking, I mean, like we're looking for bids for sand and we're looking for bids for, I don't remember what else right now. And, um, just, uh, so, so just to follow up, Steve, you're, you know, you're, you and John don't feel that the response to the bid is what we were looking for? So are you looking to reword and repost or?
Well, I mean, that's your, the board can do anything they want in regards to this thing. I don't know that we're gonna get any more bids. I think it's a matter of clarification. I guess the biggest issue is, do you think they've done a good job in the past? And if you do, then we ought to be able to have that opportunity to be clear about what our expectations are and then rearrange your costs accordingly.
I haven't known of anyone different, you know, I have no one to compare it to, um, in all honesty.
I don't either for quite a few years.
Yeah, um, so there was just, uh.
We're not gonna complain.
Okay, what's, yes, John?
That's a good thing.
Um, I did talk to Matt, who was the representative of the firm that was here today. And he, late today, he was able to talk to the owner and the owner would be willing to sit down and talk with us to, you know, more adequately define how many days we think we really need an assessor here, so. Matt kind of gave you the history. We used to have a full-time assessor, five days a week, sitting here waiting for the firm to come in and ask a question. Apparently when Perry Ellsworth was here, he cut that back to two days. And then they decided they wanted to have a professional firm come in occasionally, not, not any, you know, like they do now. And then it evolved into what we have. So, uh, what you have, you, you, you're getting from your assessor a lot more than other assessors are providing, like updating your tax maps, uh, every year and, and producing them for you. And, uh, they also, uh, do twenty-five percent of your properties each year to make sure they're all up to date. So every, every fourth year, every property is being looked at again, and that's gonna delay you having to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars for reevaluation. So you gotta look at that too. And they've been here since, I believe, he said, two thousand eight. Yeah, so, uh, but just so that you know, what he, what he actually bid provide two designated days per week, fifty weeks annually at the town office for scheduling meetings with taxpayers and to perform any other necessary assessing functions. And what I had put in a bid spec, I actually changed it because it, it had two days and it had actually a third day in there for other things that I didn't think was necessary. So what I worded was provide two designated days per week as needed at the town office for scheduling meetings with taxpayers and to perform any other necessary assessing functions. At least one day per week is expected. So what I had in mind then was right after tax bills go out, that's when you're most likely to have people calling because they want to see how the property is assessed. Especially when the tax bill goes up. So I was thinking maybe one or two months, two days a week for those kind of scheduled appointments. But then at least one day a week for all the other interactions because he does twenty-five percent of the properties each year and he does, uh, you know, other things. And they do all the building permits and all the homestead exemptions, all the tree growth properties. Like, there's a lot involved in, in what's required by assessors, but they do a lot more than you normally expect. So I think since this doesn't expire until, uh, September thirtieth, we have another meeting. Maybe we should wait till the next meeting and I'll have a chance to talk to the owner and see if we can come up with, you know, because, because Matt was thinking there probably are several weeks where we don't have to be here two days a week, especially January, February, when it's cold and snowy and, you know.
Well, there's probably not much to do either, particularly if they got this cycle down pat in terms of reevaluation.
What he told me a lot of times is this time of year, they're out in the field taking measurements and updating properties. And then in the winter when, or it's a rainy day, that's when they're in here updating the computer and all that stuff. So they, uh, they did a lot early on apparently to convert all the files from the, you had a northern data system. And they converted all the files to what we now have as a trio system. So everything is, is computerized, or it should be. So it makes it a lot easier for tax billing and everything else. You update those very often. So I think, you know, having one company bid it and they've been the one that's been doing this town for years, that's probably appropriate, but I think they're willing to work with us. Maybe we can get them to lower the price a little bit. Uh, just so you know, what we're paying right now, um, is sixty-eight thousand dollars. First year of their proposal is about five hundred dollars cheaper. Sixty-seven, five hundred. And then the next year, sixty-nine, five, and the next year, seventy-one, five, for a three-year contract. So if we can cut it back a little bit and you cut them back a few, you know, maybe even up to a quarter. One day a week instead of two days and we might be able to save four, five more thousand dollars.
It sounds like they're willing to sit and assess it, so that's.
He was, the owner was on his way to St. Albans. We didn't get a really chance to talk to him today, but he did sound like he was willing to sit down and work out something.
Tony, you had a question?
Yeah, not a question. Um, I remember when this all came about originally and, um, we had a full-time person here. And they weren't doing all the stuff that these guys are doing. And it was costing us almost, not sixty-seven thousand, but within, you know, close to that. And it was costing us almost, not 67,000, but within, you know, close to that for all the bannies and everything else you pay on somebody. This is a deal, and as you write, the whole valuation's somewhere between 200 and 250,000 dollars. These guys are saving us that.
Yeah, I think that's smart to do them a quarter of your property every year, then you're always updated.
Absolutely, and you don't miss out on...
You know, everybody knows that their tax bill has basically been looked at, and, you know, what their property actually is every...
Okay, good. So, we're going to have John make a contact again, renegotiate these numbers, and then come back to us at the next, at the next Leckman's meeting, we'll vote on it then.
Sounds good.
We good with that?
Yep.
All right, let's go. Town manager, department head updates. Go ahead, John.
Okay. First thing that was added since Friday is the economic development director's report. I noticed on Keith's report, Public Services, he mentioned Lake Street was awaiting the sidewalk paving completion at the Skowheek and saving bank location, because we were trying to tie that in with a parking lot. Apparently, that paving's been done today or yesterday.
That was...
Pardon?
Probably different.
Okay, so that's, yeah, to that one.
You fix those potholes according to Skowheek and Long's parking lot? Ones that cars disappearing?
I sure hope somebody did.
You too. Good when I started.
It's a beautiful job doing that.
Yeah, very nice.
If you noticed on the code enforcement officers' report, we've had no cooperation with the lands of property up there. We're going to have to do something with the...
Let me ask you a question about that, if you don't mind. A citizen came to me and talked to me about that, and expressed a concern that we are being heavy-handed with this particular property, and we should be assisting, I don't like the messaging now, that we should be assisting and helping get rid of the bottles and cans because that was, that state regulated and so on and so forth. Is there a call we can make, et cetera? I didn't have the answer to that.
The license with the state has been revoked.
So, essentially...
Many months ago, so that's why they're not moving those, because the people who pick them up can't pick them up because they don't have a license anymore. But that's part of the problem.
So, does this mean that these can go to another redemption center then, to be redeemed?
I would think, and...
He owns it. He do what he wants with it. He owns it, he paid for it.
I'm sorry?
He paid for it.
Yeah, he would have paid, you know, URI five cents for each can.
No, I understand all of that. What I'm, what I'm talking about now merely is the cleanup of the property that's being requested.
Part of it's the cans, part of it is a lot of oil spills from whatever he does with those snow machines or vehicles. A lot of it was very reasonable. I went up there and met with him when Tom went up, and we had two people from the DEP go up at the same time, one with the redemption part of it, and one with the oil part of it. And we gave them like 90 days, you know, to do, you all saw that, 30 days, do this, 30 more days, do that. Very reasonable work with them, and he was, yeah, we're going to do this and that, we're going to stop right here. Never did a thing. 90 days, going to buy nothing. So, he never intended to cooperate whatsoever.
Been down this road before with these guys.
Yeah, so we've got to get serious, and we pointed out to them in the statute for junkyards. I mean, there's a $1,000 a day fine, and every day is a new violation. We made it clear that, you know, you've got to do something with us, and he did nothing.
Yes.
But how is he going to get rid of the bottles and cans? If the state won't take them, I mean...
Well, it's not the state, they're individual companies, but they have to report on whatever license they have. I don't know the actual workings of that deal, but that's what I surmised from talking to the guy that was there months ago when we met with them. Because he has a license, he doesn't have a license anymore, and the state was willing to renew it if he just complied with reapplying, but he didn't even do that. I don't know. I'm not sure what to do with the cans. Tom actually tried to get him to donate them to one of these fundraisers.
Fire department.
The kids at the school are fighting about it, they have fundraisers, collected cans, and it sounded like he was in agreement, but I don't know that he ever followed through on them.
Because, I mean, they're, they love to do things for kids.
They do.
They do. So, I'm really surprised that, and maybe that's where, you know, the town can help facilitate that, you know, I mean, that's at least a start. I mean, we can't do anything about, you know, the oil spills, but we have cans that can be moved, and...
Now, can we legally go on his property and take those cans and bottles?
No.
Well, before we do that, we contact the fire department and see if Chief Bacon can't organize something in terms of a bottle drive, and then have the fire department discuss with them. Maybe not, I'm getting looks like, oh, he backed, well, that's a bad thing.
Well, the problem is, there's so many bottles and cans up there.
Bottles.
And, you know, they don't, I don't know if they have the facility or the wherewithal to deal with them all.
Some of them are also crushed, and once they're crushed, you can't get any money for them because, I don't know much about it, but they had a machine in one of the buildings there that would crush them and count them, and that's how they would get reimbursed, but once they're crushed, you or I couldn't go cash them in.
Okay.
Some law for that affected them, not that familiar. But the point is, the 90 days are up, Tom was more than generous to try to work with them sincerely. The state was willing to work with them, and they've done that.
Could you have Tom give us a report at the next meeting of where we are? Mr. Cool?
I believe there's still a few days left, Peter.
Yeah.
So, the 90 days will be up. Yeah, September 11th, the 90 days will be up tomorrow for them.
As a citizen, I'm going to drive by, A, first of all, he owns those cans, you can't just go take them from him. He paid five cents for every one of them.
I understand that.
So, but from a, I saw a standpoint, you got to go along with John and say, look, you were told, you either charge him the daily rate to clean it up, or you go and clean up and charge him. I'd charge him, but you have 90 days, and he's made no effort. I don't dislike Gary or Joe, but that's not fair to us.
That's what we've been saying, yeah. We're also trying to find some proactive ways to help out too, so it doesn't seem like...
Maybe the container, talk to the can guy in Portland, and say, okay, if we brought you a whole can of containers, what can you pay Mr. Glens for?
That's a good idea.
Right.
What's the cost of a container, do you know?
Oh, man, I don't.
You're going to have a varmint problem.
Well, you get them frequently up at the transfer station.
It'd probably be a different rate based on, I'll have to look at it honestly.
Could you get us a rate on that, because that's a good suggestion?
The weight, I can tell you, because we did a lot at the Four Seasons, it's transportation plus weight. So, it's...
Depending where you have to ship it.
Yep, yep.
More than anything.
Okay, any other comments on this? Very good, thank you.
Just make sure you read what Tom wrote here, because he needs trying to, best he can, get in the corporate.
Well, now that, we got oil spills, we don't want that leach, and then somebody else.
DEP has been back up there last week, but effectively they're building more now than what they were. The state's going to take action on the...
Can't make this stuff up.
Okay, anything else with department heads? On the calendar, October 3, 4 of 2018, MMA convention, I believe that's in Augusta, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, current situation here, the town office will be closed those two days because everybody here is going, and we don't have anybody for coverage. The one person that could, that's our vacation week, so we will be closed those two days.
Well, we put it on there to ask you permission to allow us to close the town all those days.
Anybody have any problem with that?
And you should all think about signing up to go a day or two or both.
Yeah.
You know, because these are, this is training, and this is annual training.
You got to do it.
The treasurer, the tax collector, the town clerk.
It's also available for any municipal officer as well, too.
Yeah, so let us know so we can register you, and if you want to go one day or two days or...
You do have in your packet a total list of all of the different offerings for the two days, things of your interest, things that we should get caught up on. There is a section in there on the new marijuana ordinance, dealing with statewide issues and so on, so that's in there. Do you need a motion for us to close it on those days?
Yeah, I would ask that.
All right, have a motion for three and four. That's over.
Make a motion to close the town office for October 3rd and 4th, so the employees can attend the 2018 MMA conference.
Second. We have a second over here. All the paper? So, NIMS training, N-I-M-S training online, it did go down for a couple of days, today being one of them. Back up, was back up this evening, so if you haven't done it, we need to get it done, and bring the paperwork in. I believe it's going to go to you.
Yeah, we wanted, just to remind you, I think the fire chief sent you probably the link to get on and take the class.
Incidentally, he did a great job with that, the chief, that was very spot-on all the way through.
And then when you, you could probably print your certificate, and then you should bring it in so we can keep it in your personnel file, because those are, it's better for us to have them, so if you have them at home, you might lose a little bit of them. And the whole purpose is, if everybody's trained, then the chief can apply for any FEMA grants that might come down, you know, the pike for like a, you know, a fire truck. You can't get less than half a million dollars, he says. So, that's the importance of, just to understand what everybody's role is in the event of an emergency.
Fairly well-defined in times of crisis, and crisis can be not only catastrophic events, but like the concert in the summertime, it's very defined. This year's a perfect example of how the fire chief will take over. Lightning, bad weather, mass crowds need to be attended to and evacuated safely, so it's a lot of good training in there. Anything else? Wasn't that John?
No.
FAA grant, John, the application.
Yeah, because we were asked, Timon originally sent in the grant application April 25th, and it was for 90% federal, 10% state, 10% town, so the town share of that would have been 579,000 dollars, and they asked us to resubmit the grant application with 100% FAA funding. So, and save us 579,000. We sent in the updated version with, you know, for the federal government to fund the whole project, which is 11,523,436 dollars. So, just wanted to let you know that, and the way I saw that is if they're asking us to change it to 100%, then...
Do it.
Somebody up there sounds like they will, you know, they're going to be giving us the grant. You know, that's what it looks like to me, and that's kind of out of the ordinary.
Can you also explain about how the upcharge is for, not the upcharge, explain about the borrow and what happens financially for the airport in the future?
So, the estimate, our estimate, we were going to fulfill that with the gravel value, the whole thing, so it wasn't supposed to cost the town anything anyway, so what they would do now is, with their funding 100%, then they would buy that gravel from us, and then that money would go into the airport account to be used for local share, which we already have, I think, three local share grants already for the engineering, okay, already, we just signed two of them a couple of weeks ago. And then for the future projects, like the taxiway that's part of the airport master plan, so that money would go into the airport account to provide money for town share of future projects as well, so we'd have to worry about the future.
So, fast translation is, this works out pretty good for everybody, because the money that they take it out to do the sewage treatment plant that we need done anyways for the future, we're getting paid for it, and the money's designated for airport use after that. Excellent, thank you, John. Any questions on that? Airport pipe, number two, casually want to turn to that so we can look at some pictures.
The public works department was asked about and tried to fix sewer pipes and apparently water pipes as well, it was freezing up for several years now since they were put in, and what they found was kind of disturbing. The plans back then called for septic lines to be placed six feet down, and when they dug it up, they found that it was anywhere from four feet to 20 inches. Specs also called for two inches of foam board at the proper depth of six feet, and being the pipe was not at the proper depth, there should have been even more insulation placed on top. As they dug up the line, they found gaps in the insulation which allowed frost through and increases the chances of pipe freezing. So, there's some pictures, some of them are kind of unclear, but they pretty much show gaps in the insulation, no foam board in places. You can see, you know, when you look at where the pipe's coming from the building, and you can see how shallow it is, there's a couple toward the end there that are pretty clear, you know, the pipe, and you can see where they installed double, double insulation, but, you know, more details, I think, keep kind of involved in that a little bit, so we wanted to bring it to your attention because we found out definitely why it was freezing up earlier because it wasn't installed properly.
Are we digging it up and digging out and putting it down six feet like...
I think we did, we lowered it to what we could, so it's still insulated, apparently. We'll have to see if we fix the problem. Apparently, they've been doing that for a couple of years in the room now, I think. And I didn't, wasn't aware of that, but Keith told me this afternoon that they had already dug up and replaced the water line, which had been freezing up.
I think it was something, because I'm like, I'll probably just fix a little bit of the same ones, but not the longer off.
These look like the same ones, what?
We've seen that, they've done that with the waterfront, with every place, waterfront.
Water pipe's in a different location. Yes, Sidney?
No, it's just, at your last airport commission meeting, is there, is everything all set, you know?
We haven't, we haven't had a meeting to say it was completed. The only meeting we had, we brought it to you, was that we approved 78,000, 17,000 or up to 17,000 to repair it or investigate the problem. I saw it at the airport the other day that it had been done. I heard the scum butt from the airport manager about the fact that it may not have been done properly when it was installed. Where you go from that with that, that's a painful...
But it's within budget, you know, with...
I don't know, I, we haven't heard the completed project, I assume it is. I assume it is.
Just didn't know if it had been...
Whether you have any recourse to a contractor or whatever, or the engineer firm that inspected it, who was there on site, who did it, whether it was done.
Who did it? You can just tell everybody who was on the job to see it and...
Our public works department corrected it, which would have been Earl and Gene White knows the typical approval we have.
No, no, inspector, didn't, prior to the work.
Prior to that, I don't know.
When it was originally done by Burgadette, was it, who inspected?
Oh, that I couldn't tell you.
Someone must have approved the work they did.
I'm sure they did. Do you remember who it was, who inspected it?
I don't.
You remember when? What you were talking about, when it was originally...
That's how we know when it was built.
2011?
Oh, okay.
That's the other primary question, I mean. Hopefully, it came in affordable CD, so it's not a big X graff.
Yeah.
If it's not, I think we should have a discussion with both the engineer and contractor.
Somebody screwed up.
Yeah, I was just curious if, you know...
It would be reasonable, I'd have a discussion with both of them, whoever they were.
It's disturbing.
What's your pleasure?
No, nothing, I was just interested in what the airport commissioner discussed about it at their last meeting, but you didn't have a meeting.
Inspection and potential repair, and I guess, we hope there's big repair.
This is... This is, yeah.
I just see the budget, I don't know what it costs us to do, I know they did it internally, that's a big help.
Yeah.
Yeah. I suspect it will be done right this time.
But it would seem wise, you might be determining the engineer and the contractor, just with them, see if they help you. I mean, it was clearly done against spec, even though it's nine years ago, it's, it would be reasonable, if they want some additional work in the community, that both of them might come voting.
No idea it wasn't on the board nine years ago.
Well.
Do you have any recommendations, John?
Well, if you put in two thousand eleven, it's a long time since it's been in. If you freeze it up, you know, a year after it started, you might be able to go after the contractor, but I don't know if you can after seven years.
With that, a two-year-old knows the difference between twenty inches and six feet. This one doesn't look like.
I don't think you could, I don't know, the statute of limitations, I mean, it's, most anything we buy today has a limited one-year warranty on the workmanship. If you don't claim it then, you pretty much have to.
I'm talking morals, not talking warranty. You just talked about morals, not warranty.
We need to see what the numbers are. Next step is just to figure out where we're at with it.
Can you give us an estimate of what it costs us to fix this?
I'll get one. I don't have it currently right now, because I don't know what the price on, Rebecca handled the idea of it was this material, which would've been the blueboard essentially. So I don't know if pieces were used, but it's at, less roughly, say thirty-five dollars a sheet. Um, I don't have a count on what makes sheets reuse. I know they were able to reuse the pipe that was in place, there wasn't much damage to it when they estimated around it. That's, that's all I have for your answer. I unfortunately don't have any kind of number on how many, total number of sheets were used for that project.
Would it be appropriate to get these numbers for us for the next, uh, next luckman's meeting?
We can do that, and then you get the labor, I mean, you're not just spending-
We got labor machinery?
Yeah, everything.
Okay. Anything else on the airport pipe? That's it, John?
Yeah.
Next is, uh, main power options. Uh, main power options versus electricity main. This is pretty involved, so John, why don't you take a stab at clarification and then tell them the good news?
Um, I gave you all, uh, what we get. I must've given you something Friday, but today I got some estimated costs, and we gave you a copy of that for main power options. So, just so you know, what you sent us, for a one-year contract, it cost us six point eight-three cents per kilowatt hour. For a two-year contract, six point six-three. For a three-year contract, six point five-two. For a four-year contract, six point four-six. So each year it's down a little bit. And, uh, how this all started is I was presented with a renewal notice from electricity main. And for four of our twenty, we have twenty electrical services, so four of them, mostly the fire station, the town hall, highway garage, all, probably one of the big, the bigger ones. We're contracted with electricity main currently at eight point seven cents. And the proposal, the contract expires in October, and they wanna renew it for one year at a cost of ten point four-nine cents.
Oh, ten?
Yeah. So I'm sitting there reading these thinking, ten point four-nine cents, holy cow. So we started looking into it, found out we have three more contracts in electricity main that expire in November. And at the same time, I had worked with, as you can see from my email trail, uh, back in Mexico and in Rockford, we have contracts with, uh, top main power options. So what main power options is, is a group of mostly municipalities that join together, and it's kind of run through the main municipal bond bank. And this guy Jonathan U, his sole job is to provide the cheapest electricity rates for its members. So, uh, just, just the difference between, uh, well, all right. When he looked into our twenty accounts, the total usage for the town is six hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Uh, kilowatt hours, I'm sorry. And, and he multiplied that times his third-year option of six point five-two, and he's talking about forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars at that rate.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
It's not six point, it's point zero six five two. Point zero six five two.
Which, which is six point six, uh, five-two cents.
Six cents.
Because you have point zero six dollars is what that is. Either way, it's dollars and cents.
Correct. We're ducking pennies.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, uh, at our total kilowatt usage, six hundred and eighty thousand, that's forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So I multiplied that times, uh, the ten dollars and forty-nine cents, that's seventy thousand, like twenty-seven thousand dollars more.
Okay.
A year. Quite, quite incredible difference.
You got too many zeros. Yeah, way too many zeros.
No, twenty-seven thousand dollars, it'd be seventy thousand dollars.
Difference between two-
Between the forty-four thousand and the, between the ten, ten, I'm sorry, I said dollars, ten point four-nine cents.
Sixty thousand kilowatts times six cents.
Times six point five-two versus ten point four-nine. I'm sorry, no.
Fifteen thousand a year.
Six hundred and eighty thousand kilowatt hours.
What, what did I just say, six?
Sixty-eight or something.
Oh, okay, okay.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars difference in price for electricity.
I gotta get my shoes off of that one.
Please don't.
Put them back on.
So anyway, I emailed him later this afternoon to, to say, uh, because I had told him last week that we had a meeting tonight, and that's why he got me these numbers today. Uh, so I remember in Mexico when I joined, we got a similar deal. And we had to join main power options, and there was like a D for join. So I emailed him back to find out what that was, and he said, I actually already remember a main power option. So we must've been with them before somebody entered a contract to go to electricity main. So we don't have to join them, all you've gotta do, and I would recommend the four years, because, I mean, that's the lowest price.
Agreed.
And if electricity rates are gonna do anything over the next four years, they're not gonna go down, they're gonna go up.
Right.
So if you wanna do that, he'll send me, I told him, wait till tomorrow after we talk about it tonight, and he'll send the contract, and he'll probably go through and cancel all these bills into electricity main. The other, uh, so seven of them accounts are with electricity main, expiring in October, November. And, uh, the rest of our twenty are under the standard-
Offer.
Offer. There might be streetlights or something like that. But they're, even the standard offer, he's gonna combine all twenty accounts to one fixed rate of six point four-six cents. That, that's pretty low.
Yeah.
Given, given where we are. So I'd recommend you go with the, authorize me to sign up for the four-year, four-year commitment.
Any questions from the board on that?
No.
Good job, John.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to enter into a four-year agreement with main power options for electricity services.
Electricity supplies, we still have the CMP services.
They have to fix it.
For electricity supply.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a movement, second. All those in favor? All, all in favor?
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
And what was, you know, I wanna give them credit, because I was sitting here reading this thinking, I gotta call Rockford and find out who the contact person is for main power option. And they emailed me that same day.
Oh, wow.
And I, and they asked if I remembered him, and I said, yeah, I do remember you, and by the way, give me, give me an estimate.
Wow.
We need it right now, and the problem, it was very good timing that he comes back to us.
It's amazing, Courtney.
Select Board, Select Board Communications. Sidney, anything?
Nothing.
Really? Dave? At our last meeting, we discussed and talked about, uh, quite extensively, an issue in the town park for lighting. Um, I know a number of us went down and looked at it, and a number of us felt that it was tastefully done, architecturally aesthetic, fits within Rainesley. But I do have a suggestion, which was brought to me by a member of the park commission, and I encouraged them to talk to the powers that be, but there is a, a, a suggestion that an extension of the shade on the light bulb that wraps around, you know, the shade comes down, and instead of just coming down to its current depth of an inch, inch and a half, we find something that goes down to the actual dimension of the bulb. So it does exclude anything that comes laterally from that, uh, from that shade, changes nothing other than the shade. And I think that might help mitigate some of the issues down there.
Are you talking about the one by, or she, or she?
I'm talking to the fourteen, however many of those ones that are on a fourteen-foot pole.
Four, four or five.
Four or five of them.
Maybe a shorter bulb, less expensive.
Maybe, if it's, if it's available.
If it's fitting up.
Yep, if the lumen, if it meets all the standards, you know, there's two options, shorter bulb if you can find it, or a shade. Uh, extension. Anyways, the point is, we're trying to make an attempt to help the citizens down there that have an issue. But I gotta tell you, John and I went down there after a very lengthy meeting the other day, and the two of us went, you shit me, this thing's beautiful. Holy mackerel, it's really nicely done, very nicely done. That's how we came away feeling, but again, with all due respect to the neighbors, I think we made an attempt to, uh,
You know, watching TV there, you sort of-
Make some suggestions.
There used to be a streetlight.
There used to be two of them in there, one of them between her house, Kathy Marques at Gerard's house, and the condos, a big one. And one at the corner of the Catholic church, but they're both gone.
I know, and this is way better.
So, again, just wanted to bring you up to speed, there wasn't, there is an attempt to get this thing resolved.
That would be good.
Anything else on the Select Board Communications? We have no executive session tonight, so I'd entertain a motion, let's go home.
Motion to go home, no, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, people.